Ms. Ryan.
Here.
I am present. Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
Mr. Weisman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you can, could I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, will be. We do have a few public comments and those will be addressed during our regular board meeting. In accordance with Michigan law, it is now necessary for our board to select new officers. And after being selected, our newly elected president will continue to chair this meeting. I'd like to open for nominations for president of Huron Valley's Board of Education. Any nominations? Yes, Mr. Weisman.
Yes, I move that the Board of Education vote and appoint as president of the Board of Education Laura Dodd for the 25-26 school year.
I'll second that.
Any more nominations? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
I am a yes. Motion carries.
I'd like to express congratulations. And I'd like to ask our new board president to please take the seat.
Well, let's keep it going. We're now looking for nominations for the Huron Valley School Board Vice President.
Give me one second here getting my paperwork together. I'd like to nominate Ms. Cotter as Vice President Huron Valley Schools Board of Education.
All right, we have a nomination. Do we have support? I'd like to second that motion. All right, so we have a motion and a second for Ms. Cotter. Do we have other, other motions? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mrs. Cotter. Ms. Cotter, all right, moving on to what comes next. Now, we're going to move on to nominations for the Board of Education Secretary for the 25-26 school year. Are there nominations for the secretary position?
Yep, I moved that the Board of Education appoint Denise Pistana as the Board of Education Secretary for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan, is there support?
Yes, I will support that motion.
All right, we have a motion and support. Are there other nominations? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd. Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Pistana. All right, last but not least, looking for nominations for the Huron Valley Schools Board of Education Treasurer for the 25-26 school year.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Mr. Weisman as the Board of Education Treasurer for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Grizmkowski. Is there a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan, any other nominations for the treasurer's position? All right, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms., Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, now I have to keep this going, don't I? I guess that's my job. So, moving on down the next, we have quite a few and we're going to try to go efficiently through these. Our next on our agenda is our designation of attorneys. I'm looking for a motion for our, to approve our designated attorneys for the 25-26 school year.
I would like to make that motion. Bear with me. I move that the following law firms be appointed for our 25-26 school year. Thruin Law Firm, Clark Hill, Hannah Blazar, Miller Johnson, Troutman Pepper, Miller Canfield, Varnum, Collins and Blaha, also legal counsel for general matters. That concludes our list of attorneys.
Thank you, Ms. Cotter. Is there support?
I will support that.
All right, Ms. Grizmkowski supports. Do we have any comments? Then we'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. Next, we're going to do the number C or letter C designation of auditors. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education appoint Hungerford Nichols as the district's auditors for the 2025-2026 school year.
Thank you, Ms. Grizmkowski. Is there support?
Yep, I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. There's support. Any, any comments? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, please. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving down to D, designation of insurance agent. Do I have a motion?
I move that Arthur J. Gallagher and Co., M A S B, SET, PCB appointed as the district's insurance agents of record and Hub International for workers' comp for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Demick. Do I have support? I'll support that. Thank you, Ms. Pistana. Any comments? All right, we'll do another roll call vote. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to E, establishment of bond for employees of the school district. May I have a motion?
Yes. I move that the bonds of the school employees through M A S B, SET, SAG, POOL be approved for the 25-26 school year. This is the employee blanket position bond of $1 million for all school district employees.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisman. Do I have support?
I'm going to support that. Tom, would you mind rereading that for me?
Yes, the recommended motion is that I move that the bonds on school employees through M A S B, SET, SAG, be approved for the 25-26 school year. The following bid is, or the following recommendation is for binding coverage for school district employees. The employee blanket position bond is $1 million.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Questions? Comments? All right, let's do another roll call vote. Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. F, designation of depositories for bank accounts, exhibit A. Do I have a motion?
Yep, I move the bank depositories for bank accounts and signatures for Huron Valley Schools for the 25-26 school year be approved as shown in exhibit A.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Do I have support?
Yes, I support that.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Discussion? Tom?
Yes, is there any change as it relates to any of our depositories that we're approving from last year to this year?
Mr. Van Goghtham?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, let's do another roll call. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, designation of official newspapers. Can I have a motion? I will make the motion. I move that the Milford Times and the Oakland Press be designated as our official newspapers and the Public Notice Weekly, a digital platform that may be used for posting legal notices for Huron Valley Schools for the 25-26 school year. Thank you very much. Do I have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Any comments? I'm grateful there are still a few newspapers that we can use. All right, let's do a roll call. I am a yes. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, designation of school board associations. May I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that our Board of Education secure for the 25-26 memberships in our following organizations, Oakland County School Board Association, the Michigan Association of School Boards, and the National School Board Association and our Michigan Parent Teacher Association.
Thank you very much for that motion. Do we have support?
Yes, I support.
All right, any comments? Nope, all right. A roll call vote, please. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, just a few more. Next, designation of person responsible for implementing the public notice requirements of the Open Meetings Act. May I have a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education designate the superintendent's administrative assistant as the person responsible for implementing the public notice requirements of the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Ms. Grizmkowski. Is there support?
Yep, I support.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Comments? All right, let's do a roll call. Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, designation of board meeting dates and locations as seen in exhibit B. Do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education accept the board meeting dates and locations for the 2025-2026 school year as shown in exhibit B.
Thank you, Mr. Demick. Is there support? I'll support that. Thank you, Ms. Pistana. Any comments, questions? All right, for the, for the folks out watching and listening, those will be posted on our website for you to see just after this meeting tomorrow morning. All right, comments, questions? No, let's do a roll call. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, three more. Designation of governance standards, exhibit C. May I have a motion?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education accept the governance standards as is shown in exhibit C.
All right, is there support?
Yes, I'll support that.
All right, thank you. And as a reminder that these are governance standards that we created and worked on together and every year we like to reaffirm that these are the standards that, that we're going to work very hard to abide by to continue to be a functional, effective Board of Education. Is there any discussion, comments, questions? Nope, all right, let's do a roll call. Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, another one of those documents that we worked on together, the designation of the board procedures manual that was created just recently as part of our board goals. May I have a motion?
Yep, I move that the Board of Education accept the board procedures as shown in exhibit D.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan, support?
I will support that.
Thank you, Ms. Grizmkowski. Questions, comments? All right, may we do a roll call, please? Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, last but not least, designation of financial advisors. I'll make the motion. I move that the Board of Education appoint Stiefel as the bond proceeds investment managers for the 25-26 school year. Thank you very much. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, let's do a roll call. I am a yes. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Our annual organizational meeting is concluded and adjourned. All right, let's move on to the next one. I'd like to call to order our regular Board of Education meeting for June 16th. Let's do another roll call. All right, Ms. Grizmkowski.
Still here.
You haven't left. Mr. Demick.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
Mr. Weisman.
I too, I'm still here.
I am also present. Ms. Dodd. Same, also here, so thank you very much. Now, we need approval of the agenda.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ryan. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Ms. Grizmkowski. All right, let's do, comments, questions? Nope. All right, let's do a roll call. Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grizmkowski.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, items from the board president, I guess, thank you very much. Looking forward to our functional, effective, and maybe creative and, and year filled with focusing on kids and the things that are best for our district and our kids. So, we, we, I have, I'm very proud of the work we've done together and will continue to do as a group and, and some of the, the things that we have going forward. So, it's not all easy, but I feel like we have done a nice job figuring out how to communicate, how to work together, and how to compromise, and I hope we can continue to do that going forward. That is my comments. Next, recognition. Do we have a hero tonight? We sure do. I'll give it to Dr. Sala.
It's not often I get to be on this side of the podium. This is sort of scary and interesting. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here and joining us on June 16th. It's beautiful outside. This evening, I have the, the privilege just to say a couple of words and acknowledge a, a longstanding employee of the Huron Valley Schools, Mr. John Tivernier. John has, has had a very successful career throughout his time here with the Huron Valley Schools. He actually graduated, for those of you who do not know, from Lakeland High School. I think something like 41 years ago or, how many years, John? Thirty, 34 years ago. Oh, gosh, I'm getting. Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking. Forty years as a student to today and then over 30 years as a Huron Valley Schools employee. I will tell you, you will not, you will not meet a more authentic, considerate, kind human being, somebody who is extraordinarily competent and has worked tirelessly on behalf of the, the children that attend schools within the Huron Valley School District. And so, John, we are so honored and privileged to present you with this plaque this evening. And before I do, we have our, our former board president here, Mr. Tom Weisman, who would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you. John, on, on behalf of the entire school board, school board, you look a lot different.
I told you.
Boy, it's, yeah, yeah, they even look better.
Yeah.
As if I'm watching on TV. I don't know what more I, I can say on behalf of the board that hasn't already been said about you, John. Obviously, you started your career as a student and it's amazing all the years that you've put in and you're still only 35. All right? At the same time, I, I think it's the years that you've put, had in Huron Valley. We are, as a lifelong resident of Huron Valley. And my students have been very, my, my children have been very blessed to graduate from Lakeland. And my grandchildren now go to, go to Huron Valley Schools. We are extraordinarily blessed to have had you in our district for all of these years. And the positive impact that you've had on our students and our kids and our community is priceless. I'm not going to add anything more and I've promised that what took place at your party will stay at your party. I'm not going to share any of the stories that, that we heard and the stories that were shared with us. They'll just, if, if you didn't come to the party, you just missed it, okay?
Totally PG.
It was totally PG, but it was really great to hear all the accolades and all the people that came to honor you and the impact that you had, the positive impact that you had on, on our, our community is enormous. So, I just want to say thank you personally and on behalf of the rest of the board. And at the same time, while you're getting a plaque, you will be honored and at our administrative office on, on the honor roll. And your name will be there and anytime you come and visit, you can see that your name is still there. All right, so congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for all that you have done and all that you have met, me personally, and to all of our kids and our community and our staff, so appreciate it.
So, John, when we. So, so, John, when we call you in four months, you can come in and check the honor roll plaque just to make sure that your name is there, but if you don't mind joining us here at the podium, John. So, we have a plaque here to present to, to Mr. Tivernier. And it has our Huron Valley Schools coin, which we only give out to those who we consider to be heroes of the Huron Valley Schools community. And it says, "In recognition of your exemplary dedication and 34 years of service to the Huron Valley School District, presented to John Tivernier," along with our coin at the bottom of the plaque. And so, there's what it looks like, John, if we can get a picture.
And I certainly want to, John, do you have something you want to say?
I'm making him so.
Speech, speech, speech.
Just real quick.
Go for it.
I just want to say, first of all, thank you. I'm very appreciative of this recognition, of this honor. I know the names that are on that plaque, and I'm going to keep this together. Know the names that are on the plaque. Many of them were mentors of mine, people that, you know, I've sat here for 12 years and as we've recognized, and for the board to recognize me with the, the honor roll is, is, is very much appreciated and it's, it's truly special. I want to thank those of you that were at the event this week and, and Mr. Lindberg for co-hosting with Mr. Parrott. We had some great laughs and memories. I owe this honor to many of the individuals that mentored me and gave me an opportunity to learn, lead, and grow here in Huron Valley, and it's with sincere gratitude that I'm able to honor them for that, for that last week. I share this honor with all of them as well, so thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And I do want to give my board colleagues, if Tom summed it up, great, but if you have things you'd like to say, I want to give you an opportunity. Amy, go ahead.
I told John this, but I wanted on the record, um, being someone who is outside of education, uh, but inside education and as a parent, um, I learned a lot from you. And I really appreciated your calm, um, very quiet leadership that, um, really spoke volumes. And, um, I'm going to miss you a lot. And I, I know that, uh, Dr. Nemeth will do a phenomenal job, but I will miss you and I will miss that, um, I always called you the duck. You were swimming, you were paddling very, you were going. I know you were going because you kept moving. But there was a calmness above the water, and I just appreciate all that you've done for our district. I think it is an incredible legacy that you would graduate from Lakeland and then go on to work in one of my favorite elementary schools. And, and then to just continue to, uh, to be, you know, latchkey John, and then to go on and, and to end up as Assistant Superintendent. I, I mean, that is, isn't that the American dream? So, I really, just thank you. Thank you for all that you've done for us.
Any other comments? We're good? All right. Well, John, we will miss you. Amy and Tom said it all. Uh, I know I've learned a lot. Your space on that honor roll is very deserved. And, um, the things that you learned, uh, you've passed on. And so, we, we really greatly appreciate that. And we also, um, are supportive and excited for you to be able to have some time. Because we know with this job, that's not, um, always, always an option. So, wake up when you want. Um, you know, take a few days, go on a trip, um, but please don't be a stranger. All right. One last round of applause. All right. And I assume we do not have a school presentation tonight? Is that correct? All right. Um, I did not, if you don't mind, Dr. Sala. I did not do the normal, um, public comment speech that usually happens at the beginning of the Board meetings. And I want to make sure I do that, so if there are folks in the audience who are interested in participating, they understand what the process is. As a school board, we appreciate the members of our community who share their public comments during the designated times in our meeting agenda. This is an important opportunity for the Board to hear from the community. However, it is not a time for two-way communication. A regular meeting of the Board of Education is designated for the Board to conduct business of the Huron Valley Schools in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Comments that require follow-up, investigation, or communication will be handled by the Superintendent or a member of the team. There are two segments in our agenda for public comments, Section 3 and 7 respectively. Fifteen minutes has been allocated in Section 3 for public comments related to action voting items or non-action items if time allows. The Board will allocate more than 15 minutes in Section, what, more than the 15 minutes allocated in Section 3? So, all public comments on action voting items may be heard in Section 3 prior to the Board voting on those items. All comments on non-action items will take place during Section, Section 7 of the agenda, if not already heard in Section 3. All speakers wishing to address the Board must be present. All individuals will be given an opportunity to speak. Each individual delivering public comment will have three minutes to share their communication. Individuals may only speak once and cannot share unused time with another person. A timer will be displayed on the screen so individuals can monitor their time. Once three minutes have elapsed, a timer will sound indicating that the public comment has concluded, and the microphone will be turned off in preparation for the next speaker. The individual must be present to share a public comment. We ask that you share your name, address, and homeschool district before sharing your comments. Furthermore, we request, request that you refrain from name-calling. Comments must be related to school business and may not include personal attacks unrelated to school business. If you make such comments, the Board of Education President will, to the extent permitted by the First Amendment, interrupt or end your comment time. If you plan to share a public comment, please complete the form, the side of the room, uh, and give your form to Ms. Caddell seated to the far left. Thank you for your professionalism and partnership. And with that, I will turn it over to you for your comments, Dr. Sala.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I have to get used to that. That's a little different. Again, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Huron Valley Schools, uh, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. I do have a few comments this evening that I wanted to walk through. First and foremost, let me just start out my comments by, uh, thanking Mr. Weisman for several years as, as Board President. I think, Tom, what, four and a half years you spent as Board President?
Yes.
Yeah, so, Tom, Tom and I, uh, between Board President, Superintendent, lived through COVID. We lived through a lot of extraordinarily challenging times in our school district's history. Uh, Tom has always been a, a steady leadership influence. He's always asked really good questions. He's always encouraged us to think deeply about solving problems, trying to come up with win-win solutions when we have issues and we have challenges. And, and Tom, uh, really grateful for your leadership, and, and I know you're still on the Board, so I can call you when I want to complain about Laura or something like that. I wouldn't do that. I'm just kidding. Um, second, on my agenda this evening, I wanted to just, uh, say congratulations to Ms. Dodd as President. Madam President, I look forward to working with you. I know we're going to have a number of, of really good conversations and help to continue uh, the good momentum of the, of the school district. Uh, congratulations to our other officers as well. Uh, look forward to working with each of you on your, on your various committees and committee assignments. Uh, point of pride I wanted to share this evening. So, you know, Huron Valley Schools really takes a lot of pride in the fact that we hold ourselves to a very high standard as it relates to, to school safety and security. There is, uh, regular run height fight training every other year. There, we are integrating Stop the Bleed training. Next school year, we have, uh, a third party come in and conduct a, a security audit of all of our facilities unannounced. Every single year, we've been doing that, uh, for the last several years just to ensure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is as it relates to school safety and security protocols. And I'm pre, I'm pleased to share that, uh, Huron Valley Schools has been selected to present at a conference coming up here in October, uh, for the best practices that we have in place. Uh, it's nice to see, uh, the hard work of all of our employees to really ensure consistent practices across the Board and make our schools as safe as they can possibly be. So, uh, looking forward to that presentation, looking forward to representing the Huron Valley Schools. Uh, I know Barb and I will be presenting, and then we will be asking, uh, Ms. Dodd or a member of the Board to, uh, present with us uh, because this is really an, an accolade for the entire school community. I also wanted to, uh, highlight a few achievements, uh, on the athletic front. You know, we talk a lot about art, academics, arts, and athletics. Oftentimes, we have, uh, school presentations where we have an opportunity to highlight some of the academics that are taking place, uh, throughout the organization. Uh, you may recall at our last meeting, we had Country Oaks here, and they were doing a really neat, uh, steam, uh, activity. And so, uh, today, I have the privilege to recognize our, our two high schools. I wanted to just, to call out that, uh, first time in Lakes Valley Conference League history that both Lakeland Boys and Lakeland Girls won the LVC All-Sports Trophy. So, both boys and girls. And this is awarded to a school that demonstrates the most success in LVC standings throughout the entire year. Uh, this is the first time that our girls have won that accolade, and it's the fifth time that our boys have won that accolade. Um, so, really proud of our, our Lakeland High School kiddos. Uh, baseball was, Lakeland baseball was conference and district champions for the fourth consecutive year. Lakeland Boys volleyball were league champions, and Milford Track and Field were conference champions three out of the last four years. So, lots to celebrate there as we bring a close to the school year. Um, I want to also congratulate all of our students and our staff and our parents on a successful school year and a successful end of school year. I had an opportunity, uh, to end the school year at Oak Valley, which was somewhat bittersweet. A lot of tears there, a lot of smiles there as well. We had an opportunity to clap out our, our eighth grade students. And, um, it just was a very, uh, heartwarming, uh, day. And again, as I said, it was the last day of school, so it was sweet in that respect. Um, it was somewhat bitter because it is the, the last year that Oak Valley will be a middle school as we will be transitioning, uh, next school year. Also had the opportunity to attend, uh, Country Oaks Elementary Schools, clap out for fifth grade. And I just heard the same reverberations at all of our schools. Lots of smiles, lots of celebrations, and a lot of excitement, uh, to bring in the summer. So, just thank you to all of our teachers, to our administrators, to our support staff uh, for all the hard work and dedication to the students of the Huron Valley Schools. I know everyone works tirelessly. And I really just want to encourage you to disconnect this summer, rejuvenate, because, you know, August is going to be here before we know it. And we're going to have to hit the ground running and working hard on behalf of, of schools and the community. So, my, my last item this evening. You know, we've had a number of questions, uh, amongst and between the Board, uh, especially in subcommittee meetings, uh, for, regarding class size updates. And so, I just wanted, for our listening audience and, and for our Board, I wanted to give you the, the latest and the greatest. Uh, so, if, if you haven't had an opportunity to review your Board notes from last week Friday, uh, I spent quite a bit of time in there just walking through where we're at thus far in the process. And again, I, you know, as we talk about all the time with the Board, class size is a process. Staffing is a process, and it's not complete until typically August, when we have a clearer sense of what enrollment will look like. Because what classes look like today oftentimes do not look the same as they do once the October count gets here. And so, what's important for our listening audience to be aware of is, is essentially enrollment, student enrollment drives staffing, and staffing drives our budget. And what's so complex about the education world is the two most important things for the Board to adopt a budget by June 30th is, number one, knowing how many kiddos you have, so enrollment. Number two, knowing what the state's going to provide us in terms of, of a foundation allowance. That's how we establish our budget. So, our Board adopted a budget on June 2nd, guestimating what we think enrollment might look like. It never looks the way it does in October, the way it does today. So, so, from enrollment to staffing to budget, that drives everything that we do as an organization. So, for some context, you know, the big question is with class size, why do we even worry? You know, why, why even bother using the contract? Why not, why not go off-script and sort of arbitrarily identify random numbers that you want to use in terms of, of class size? Well, when we sit down to bargain with all of our employee groups across the organization, the big question that drives bargaining, you can imagine, is budget, right? So, when we talk about staffing and we talk about our ability to attract and retain employees to the Huron Valley Schools, that staffing item is super important because we lose really good quality teachers and parrot educators and secretaries if we can't be competitive with other school districts around us. So, I also think it's really important for our listening audience to know, and those who are watching this at home, our Board is laser-like focused on this conversation of class sizes. We talk about this all the time. Right around December timeframe, we actually did, uh, somewhat of a deep dive from a research and data perspective. We looked at, uh, all school districts that are contiguous to us. The Wald Lakes, the South Lions, the Heartlands, the Hollies. In order to, to really get a clear determination as to where our class sizes are and how we compare to everyone else. I was pleased to report to the Board that we actually have the lowest class size numbers, uh, when, when looking at all of the other contiguous districts' contracts. I also think it's really important to note that when you look at our K through 5 for the 24-25 school year, while our class sizes start out in, in kindergarten, the max you can have is 20, and in fifth grade, the max you can have is 31. Our average is 23.8 for the 24-25 school year. Now, that's all K through 5. And, and that's not to say that every classroom is at 23.8. That's to say that's the average. So, we have some that are 18, and we have some that are 29. So, we have, you have a range. The current school year, when I look at current staffing, we're actually down approximately 90 students in the elementary. And we have, we're carrying one more staff than we are in the current school year. So, we have lower enrollment, and we are carrying greater staff. Last year, our Board, as part of these discussions, asked that the administration not allow a class to have 30 for more than one consecutive year. So, we implemented that last school year. So, when we started the school year, there wasn't a single classroom in, uh, the district, elementary level, that had a class of 30 or more. We had one class at Johnson hit 30 in the second count, and so, we automatically deflated that class going into the 25-26 school year in order to align with the Board's request and the expectations uh, and, and based upon the conversations that we've had. So, in the current school year, uh, again, it's still early. Uh, we are at an average of 22.8. Uh, at kindergarten, we're at an average of 20, first grade 24, second grade 22.5, third grade 22.1, uh, fourth grade, grade 25.1, fifth grade 23. And again, all of these numbers, uh, are in your Board notes along with, uh, each of the individual, uh, schools, uh, that you received, uh, last week. And I guess the only final thought, uh, that I would, I would share this evening related to, uh, staffing is one option that we have not been implementing as a district, um, is this notion of split classes. So, there is a possibility that i, in order to continue to be aligned with, uh, the budget expectations and the budget that the Board adopted, is that we can always consider employing split options. And I will tell you, for those who are out there in the listening audience and the three people that are watching this at home, there is, there is a, a varied number of opinions related to this notion of, of class sizes. Uh, some people really like them and think they're totally fine. Um, it really comes down to the educator that you have in front of children, their skill set, you know, providing them with the training if they need it. Um, and, and in that way, split classes do lower class sizes in some instances uh, rather than adding another staff. Because each time we add another staff, it's about $130,000 that we have to budget. So, so, the budget you adopted, Board, had an additional, it gave me the ability as Superintendent to have six full-time equivalent teachers. We've used four since you adopted the Board, since you adopted the budget. And there may be a couple more over the course of the summer depending upon enrollment. We always lose kids and we always gain kids in different spots, and you just never know where that is going to, to end up. So, I believe that that concludes my comments, Ms. President. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I imagine our students are enjoying a well-rested summer. No student leadership? Okay. Um, association communication.
Good evening. Congratulations to Laura and our new officers. I am grateful for our partnership as our collaboration positively impacts all of our staff and students. I look forward to our future conversations next year. Because we are here again at the end of another school year. In September, in October, the end of the year seems so far away. However, every year, we successfully manage to get through each month to get to this point today. By this evening, most of our educators are two-ish days into summer break, and our educators at the IA only have two more half-days to go. On the afternoon of the 18th, all of our educators will be enjoying time with family and friends and recharging so they can be ready to come back next year. A few minutes ago, as we celebrated John's retirement, I want to thank John on behalf of the HVEA for his support throughout his time in Huron Valley. John's knowledge of the inner workings of our district and the history he brings with him in conversations is invaluable. John and I have had many discussions over the past five years about concerns for our district and our educators. over the past five years about concerns for our district and our educators. I appreciate our open dialogues and collaborative problem solving. And Lena, who I know is over there, I look forward to welcoming Lena into her new position. Lena is intelligent, kind, thoughtful, and cares deeply about our students and staff. She is the right person for this job, and our district is so fortunate to have her. I wish the board, central office, and our HVS staff, families, and community a wonderful and rejuvenating summer break. May this time be filled with joy, relaxation, and new adventures for all, especially John. See you all in August. Thank you.
I keep forgetting I have to move it along. Thank you very much. Next, board correspondence. Do we have any board correspondents?
No correspondents tonight.
Thank you very much. Treasurers report?
Apparently, this is still my job for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll I'll report next time.
All right. Reports from board committee. Because he was the chair, he gets to do it. Tom Weisman for the executive committee.
All right. The executive committee met on June 10th, 2025, at 1 o'clock at the administrative office. The meeting was called to order. Present were myself, along with Member Pistana and Dodd, Superintendent Sala, Jeanette Wanger, along with Barb Ruffler and Heather Caddell. There were no one absent, and there were no public comments. We discussed the organizational meeting and the items that were on there, school safety and security. Barb shared the results of the educational facility assessment provided by Fortis Security Group, pleased with the results, and shared the many of many of their findings that are already in process of being addressed. Class size update, as a follow-up to what Dr. Sala just mentioned in his report, we continued that conversation on June 10th as a related elementary class size, based on projected enrollment figures, and also talked about middle school and high school. We also had a discussion regarding contract language, regarding long-term subcompensation, and edut staff. We also had a discussion regarding that, regarding current policies regarding compensation for long-term subs, and we also discussed the importance of ensuring consistent pay practices for long-term subs, along with the hiring process for edut staff members. Jeanette outlined the onboarding process for edut staff employees, including the steps they follow and the verification procedures required before working for the district. As part of this process, the district must have fingerprint records on file for all edut staff employees to complete the verification requirements and prior to them taking, working within the district. We also had a discussion regarding the 2526 school calendar that's before us today. Joint communication from HVEA and administration will be shared with staff and community upon approval of the calendar by the board at tonight's meeting. Board meeting calendar and location, the committee reviewed the proposed 2526 board calendar and provided input on a few adjustments to align it with the 2526 school calendar that's before you. In addition, Denise Pistana, Member Pistana requested the addition of a school aid care to the HVS glossary that was approved tonight, and also inquired regarding gymnastics, confirming their permanent location within the Oak Valley Center next year. She also expressed concerns about potential conflicts between the HVAC programs offering and those of our rec and ed department, and requests clarification on the terms of the existing contract. The HVA contract is attached, has been provided for the board review and response to Miss Pistana's request. Laura Dodd re-inquired about the use of common district-wide calendar for buildings to use during planning, aiming to avoid scheduling conflicts between elementary and secondary events into the future. The meeting was adjourned at 3 o'clock, and the next meeting will be determined by our new president.
Still a mystery. Next, the TLT committee. TLT met June 11th at the administration building. The meeting was called to order at 1:06. Present were myself, Mr. Dimick, Ms. Cotter, Mr. Tverneer, Dr. Sala, Dr. Nemeth, Mr. Endicott, Mr. Limburg, Ms. Bjorkman, Ms. Horwitz, Ms. Weeks, and we had two of our student leaders, Landon and Gabriel. There was no one absent. There was no public comment. There was no unfinished business. New business. We had a discussion about the Milford High School Orchestra pit filler. Ms. Weeks shared that the Milford Orchestra pit filler had reached the end of useful life and is in need of replacement. The proposed system will be easier to use and more versatile. This purchase is budgeted in the 2023 Capital Projects Fund. The committee supported this purchase to appear as new business on tonight's agenda. We also talked about the Imagine Learning licenses. These were formerly known as E2020. Imagine Learning provides access to courseware for credit recovery labs at Lakeland, Harbor, and Milford. Fewer licenses will be needed next year as both schools will be reducing the number of concurrent students scheduled during the day. The committee supported the purchase request for 70 concurrent Imagine Learning licenses to appear on tonight's consent agenda. We talked about the 2526 calendar. The HVEA and administration had tentatively agreed to it. The proposed calendar generally mirrors the 2425 calendar. First day of school was previously announced and will be September 2nd. Committee approved this item appearing as new business tonight. There were no strategic plan updates. Under safety and security updates, Mr. Endicott shared that a unit from the Michigan State Police Cyber Command Center completed a free cybersecurity assessment on our district's security systems. They are set to come back at a later time to present their findings and recommendations. We had student leaders, Landon from Lakeland and Gabby from Milford. They were introduced. Both students have been members of their school's student council for the past four years. They jumped right in, and their first question they asked about the cell phone policy being discussed, and also talked about class size. So they are engaged. Last thing was, under other, we talked about the mentoring time. We discussed the challenges and benefits of seminar or win time being scheduled midday versus at the end of the day. Seminar slash win is the time that our parent mentor program runs, and it is planned for both Mira and White Lake to schedule it midday next year. We adjourned at 2:14. Next meeting is to be determined. Thank you. There's a little bit of a theme with the next meetings. Next, Finance and Operations Committee.
Finance and Operations Committee met on Wednesday, June 11th at 7:59 a.m. Yes, one minute early. We met at the administration building from the board. Mr. Weisman was present. Ms. Ryan and myself. We had Mr. Van Goghtham, Mr. Rebe, Ms. Carrigan, Ms. Mariskin, Ms. Weeks, Ms. Timberlake, Mr. Maxwell, and Mr. Miller from Clark Construction, Mr. Weinrock from TMP Architecture, and Mr. Twig from Barton Mallow. It was a full house. We did not have any public comment. We had several things, we have a, we had our, we had several things on the consent agenda, including the organizational meeting, which we held earlier this evening. We reviewed the all of the items for that meeting. That is, this is an annual requirement under which Board Policy 8350 states of the Board of Education must designate certain entities that will be used during the next school year. We did not have any unfinished business. We do have new business this evening. We have Bid PAC 15, which is the Huron Valley Schools Administration Building Relocation. Mr. Miller from Clark Construction discussed with the committee their recommendation letter, which identified 17 bidders and the their amounts. The total Bid PAC 15 amount is $5,495,813 plus a 12% contingency of $659,498, with 2% general conditions of $123,106 for a grand total of $6,278,417. This project is funded through the 2023 Capital Projects Fund. The administration will seek approval at the July 2nd board meeting. In addition, we also had Ms. Weeks come and speak to us regarding the orchestra pit filler system at Milford High School. We were presented with the bid from Stage Right for the new orchestra pit filler system, which includes the demolition of the old system and the installation of the pit safety net in the amount of $113,385, with a contingency of 12% and the amount of $13,606.20 for a total amount of $126,991.20. This project will be funded from the 2023 Capital Projects Fund. We did not have a safety and security update. In addition, we also had bond construction update. Mr. Maxwell from Clark Construction discussed all of our contingency remaining contingencies, as well as updates for all of our current bid packs, gave updates on the demolition of the Lakeland High School and Milford High School and Wald Lake Middle School as part of the construction for the large instruction for the old pools, as well as sharing sharing photos of Bid PAC 13 and Bid PAC 14, which is the Oak Valley Middle School Controls. Middle School Steering Committee update. Our final steering committee meeting was held on Monday, June 9. The middle school, White Lake Middle School schematic design was turned over to Clark Construction, and the new middle school schematic design is due to Clark on July 11. And we reviewed the updated White Lake Middle School floor plan, including focus group updates, along with the new middle school floor plan. Electric vehicle charging station discussion. Mr. Van Goghtham shared that MAC Service Corp. bid that we received from EV charging stations, we will continue to look for grant opportunities due to the prices, which averaged out to approximately $100,000 per building. We'd like to get the hot robotics team involved with this discussion once again, and we'll be in contact with them for further discussion. Future discussion items. We we will plan a bond construction tour with the Board of Education in July or August to show progress of all summer construction work. The date of that is to be determined. Our meeting adjourned at 9:03 a.m., and we do have a scheduled meeting for June 25th at 8 a.m., and Mr. Weisman hopes to see you there.
Thank you very much. We have not had a communications, marketing, and legislative committee meeting since our last meeting, and we will make sure that that meeting dates are communicated as soon as we have the committees formed going forward. So next, we have our public comment section. Right now, I have three public comment forms. None of these forms are are related to any of the items we're voting on this evening, but that means we'll move them up and we'll do them during this section. As a reminder, what am I gonna, participants have three minutes to present their comments. When recognized by the president, board president, in accordance with board policies permitted to adjust allotment of time for speakers, you'll be called to present your comments during this section. So when you come up, please, please say your name, the municipality where you live. We don't need your whole address. And and then we'll start our timer from there. So first, we will have Nicole Bodmer, and after Nicole, we'll have Shannon.
My name is Nicole Bodmer. I live in White Lake Township. Was there something else? Okay. I am here today to talk with you guys regarding Oxbow Elementary's second incoming second grade classroom, the class that was currently first grade. I'd like to share a heartfelt and impactful letter that I wrote as a parent and as an employee. I am here to express my concern regarding the large class sizes for the first grade classroom at Oxbow Elementary, a Title I school in our district. The principal and teacher at and teachers proposed at Oxbow that for the 2526 school year, that the group of 58 students be divided among three classrooms for second grade, due to a continued high student numbers. The placement into three classrooms was denied by the board office superintendent in TLT stating that the class sizes were not at the district max cap of 30 students per year. Both of the first grade classrooms are at 29 and 29 students right now, with another known student enrolling soon. The students have been in large class sizes for the past two years. When this group started in kindergarten, and again, moving into first grade, the teachers, the teachers, support staff, and principal at Oxbow expressed their concerns for the superintendent in TLT on several occasions that about the concerns of this group having such large class sizes. The class cap is continually a moving target for this.
Kamalary, all right. And I'm from White Lake.
Thank you.
I'm also speaking on behalf of my kids at Oxbow, specifically my daughter going into second grade. There are significant concerns regarding classroom sizes at Oxbow, which have impacted the quality of education our children are receiving. When my daughter began kindergarten, her class size consisted of 28 students, and this past year has grown to 29. I've recently learned that Ms. Greenleaf requested to split this group into three classrooms, and it has been denied. This request came from the person who is in charge of setting and overseeing academic goals and ensuring ensuring teachers have what they need to meet those goals, and it was denied by people who are not even present on a day-to-day basis. I understand that there is a 30-student cap in the teacher contract. However, I don't really agree with that number, and I know many others don't. It's really not fair to the students or the teachers to be in that type of setting. The state school board recently passed a resolution which supports smaller class sizes. They recommend no more than 20 in grades K to 3, no more than 23 in grades 4 to 8, and no more than 25 in grades 9 to 12, and that this should be implemented no later than the 2030 school year. This was a study-based recommendation performed by the University of Michigan. What I'm hearing is that our group of kids at Oxbow are exceeding the recommendations of not just their age group, but all age groups for the past two years and now going into a third. It's somewhat appalling, especially in a Title I school that has multiple children receiving special education services, English language services, reading support, and multiple other supportive services. I did pull a little bit of data. I'll go quickly. But Oxbow, for their state tests in the 2324 school year, their overall subjects were the lowest out of all eight elementary schools in the district. They were also the lowest, they were at 25%, with the highest in the district being 56%. They were also the lowest in making progress towards being proficient at 46%, with the highest being 68%. They were also the lowest in English learner students who are showing progress in the WIDA test scores amongst the other four elementary schools that had enough students to even calculate data for that. So real quick, my husband and I both went to Huron Valley. I went to Oxbow, so we're just asking you to reconsider that denial.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kamalary. I appreciate your comments. Next is Sherri Masson.
I'm Sherri Masson from Milford. I'm here as a volunteer with End Gun Violence Michigan, a coalition of over 50 organizations working for gun violence prevention. I'm here to talk about Michigan's new Safe Homes, Safe Schools law that was passed in 2024, which requires that school districts inform their parent and caregiver community about Michigan's Safe Gun Storage Law every year. I got into the GVP or the Gun Violence Prevention Movement when I was a fifth grade teacher right here in Huron Valley. While working in my room early one morning, listening to my radio before the kids arrived, I heard of the report of a kindergartner named Kayla who was shot and killed by her classmate, who had found a gun in his parents' nightstand and brought it to school. This event followed not long after the Columbine shooting, and I always believed that a school was a sacred place because of the presence of children. And these two events set me on my journey of over the past 25 years to work towards reducing gun violence. Firearms are the leading cause of death among children and teens in Michigan. Almost 40% of Almost 40% of Michigan households have at least one gun, and most of them are responsible gun owners. We know that roughly 3/4 of school shooters under the age of 18 got the gun from their home or from the home of a close relatives. And although those are the ones that get the headlines, a good number of these are suicides. If our parents and caregivers in Huron Valley are aware of Michigan's Secure Storage Law and are supported in following it, we can keep our communities safer. We have developed a one-pager that I've dropped off for you with our most up-to-date information about Safe Homes, Safe Schools, and what the school district should expect to see and when. Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is the source of these materials and that you will be asked to distribute and be sent to you via the Michigan Department of Education. That'll happen sometime in August. The law asks you to share that information with parents by October 2025. I and my team can be a resource for you for educational materials and free gun locks, as well as answer any questions you might have about the law. Our education team has been trained in the safe storage and can speak and offer information to any group in the Huron Valley School community that might be interested. We have community members here tonight wearing orange for June Gun Violence Awareness Month. We have orange ribbons over on the cart that you're welcome to take and wear in support of educating the public on this important law. If you need more information, I'd be glad to set up a time to talk. Thank you for your time tonight and for all the work that you do to keep students and employees safe in Huron Valley schools.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Masson. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them, and we do hold important the ability for the community to be able to address us at every meeting. So thank you for coming and sharing your comments with us. Next, we're moving to the Consent Agenda. May I have a, yeah, may I have a motion to approve the items on the Consent Agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda items A1 through A4 as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Grisimskowski. Do I have a second?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Ms. Cotter. Any comments? Alright, let's do a roll call.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes, there we go.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Alright, moving on to unfinished business. The first thing on the unfinished business category is the Superintendent Evaluation. The Revised School Code requires school boards to evaluate their superintendent's job performance annually as part of a comprehensive performance evaluation system that takes into account student growth and assessment data. The instrument used by Huron Valley Schools is provided by the Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB, based on the requirements of the Revised School Code. On June 2nd, at the end of our regular school board meeting, the board gathered in a closed session requested by Dr. Sala for the purposes of completing his annual performance evaluation. The outcome of this meeting is, uh, meeting is our delivery of a completed evaluation with the official finding that Dr. Sala is an effective superintendent, which is the highest level of performance on this evaluation tool. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Dr. Sala's. And then we can have comments after we make the motion, yes?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's evaluation as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Wiseman, do we have support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Ms. Pastana. Any comments? Okay, no comments. Let's take a roll call.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sala, for your continued service. We appreciate it. Next, the elementary health curriculum. I'm gonna move this to you, and you're gonna move it to John, yes?
Well, I'm just going to say that we had a presentation on the elementary health curriculum at our last public board meeting. We heard from Mr. Diverner as well as the TLT team. I have not had any additional questions, have you, Mr. Diverner? So seeing no additional questions, we would ask for board support of the elementary health curriculum as presented.
Thank you very much. So we are looking for a motion. Once we have the motion, second, we can have discussions. So we're looking for a motion to approve the elementary health curriculum in Exhibit C.
And I'm going to support that motion for our elementary health curriculum.
You're gonna make the motion?
I'm gonna make the motion for, to approve our elementary health curriculum as it was presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cotter. Do we have support?
I will support that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dimick. Any comments? Yes, sir?
I just had a quick comment about that. Anytime we talk about health curriculum, especially at the lower L level, parents, myself included, we get a little bit nervous. We don't, there are certain things we want to be able to teach and certain things we think schools can teach. So as always, with any of these topics, I just want the public to know that there is opt-out availability for anything. But this does hit on the highlights of what we are required to teach by state law.
Looking for other questions? I did have a question, and it's been answered, but I think it would be helpful just to share it out for the public, is one of the things that we discuss in the health curriculum is, um, is about safety, personal safety. And it's one of the topics that we know is very important for the children to learn about feeling safe and keeping themselves safe. And my question was, how often do we talk about this? And is it in the curriculum every single year at an age-appropriate level? And so the answer is yes. But does anybody want to say a little bit more on that? Other than yes, it's in the curriculum every year?
The actual units of study?
Nah, just if there's, but it's covered every year.
Yes, health is covered everywhere. It's scaffolded in by each teacher. There are certain units that they, that they will teach. They all go through the appropriate training in order to be, in order to be able to facilitate those conversations in an appropriate manner. John, anything to add?
Yeah, I would just add that in the lower L, there's fewer lessons. There's roughly 20 to 25 lessons in the lower L. That increases in the upper elementary ages with 30 to, so roughly once a week. That is coming back to students as part of our curriculum.
And that curriculum teaches every year, personal safety. Yes, okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions about the elementary health curriculum? Any? Yes?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, because after being in the classroom and having the training originally many years ago, although it's been revised, it's always been great-appropriate, age-appropriate, and it's all designed by our Michigan Health Model is what we follow. So not only here in Huron Valley, but other districts also follow the same guidelines. So hats off to our teachers because they've all been retrained in the, in the program. And it's very age-appropriate, and it's kinda cute, actually. Anyway, I just had to say that.
Thank you very much. Alright, with that, let's take a vote. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next, moving on to the high school ELA resources.
So I'm unaware of any questions, and I don't believe we've had any follow-up questions for TLT. So we would ask for board approval. For our listening audience, those who are unfamiliar, we, we have a multi-step process. So when these things come before the board and they're asking for, and we're asking for board approval, they've heard this probably 12 times. So these resources went to the TLT Subcommittee of the Board. They ask a series of questions. We include responses to those questions, not only to the TLT Subcommittee, but to the entire board. Then there's a full board presentation under New Business at a regular board meeting. And then after at least two weeks, we bring it back to the full board, and we ask for approval. That gives the board at least two weeks to ask any questions, review any curriculum, any materials. And that way, we can answer those questions. So by the time it gets to this point and we're asking for approval, the board has seen, has asked questions, and has had an opportunity to engage in a lot of conversations around these topics. So I know it feels like we're just asking for approval, and there haven't been any questions. But there have been questions. It's just since the last two weeks, we haven't had any additional questions. So seeing done, we're asking for approval of high school ELA resources as presented.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the high school ELA resources.
Thank you very much. Support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes, Mr. Wiseman?
Yes. It really, it's just a comment as it relates to both high school and middle school. I just want to say thank you. Dr. Sala, you just, you just really went through the detail. We had a lot of opportunities to ask questions. The presentation from the Teaching Learning Technology Team was absolutely outstanding two weeks ago. I appreciate the additional information that was provided to us. I'm very excited about the implementation of this work, and I think it's just a continuation of our, our focus on what's best for kids. And I really appreciate the work that was done and the thoroughness and the process that we followed. So just comments.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
One question.
Yes.
Just, just a point of clarification. I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I want to ask anyway. As a parent who enjoys reading along with their children, these, these resources, the names of these resources are available online in our curriculum, correct? I thought that was the answer, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the materials presented and everything were very helpful. In fact, I ordered a whole bunch of books that I did not have. I'm not gonna read Tuesdays with Maury. That's the only one on the list that I'm gonna skip. But otherwise, very, a very well-thought-out, comprehensive list of, of long and short stories. And we've, we've already started to look at some of those at our house. So, so thank you very much. So for the other questions related to high school?
ELA.
Nope, alright. Can I have a motion, please? Oh, we already did, you're right, let's vote.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a yes. Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to middle school ELA resources, presented at the exact same meeting, actually, I think, kinda presented together. Do we have additional comments? Nope. Alright, may I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the ELA resources as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dimick. Do we have support?
All support.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Any comments? Alright, let's take a vote.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
I am a yes. Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you very much. Moving down to the elementary music equipment purchase. Oh, I lied, I checked off the wrong thing. Okay, moving to tiered riser staging system purchase, all related to music.
Yep, so this was presented at our last board meeting as well. It's, it's for the pit in the CPA at Milford High School. We fielded some questions with FNO and with TLT when they were, when they were presented. I have not had any additional questions. I don't believe Mr. Diverner's had any additional questions.
This is just the tiered risers this evening, the pit.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, this is just the risers. My apologies.
On stage.
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the, is F the pit?
It's new business.
It's new business.
I'm way ahead of myself. Sorry.
That's okay.
Forget everything I just said.
No, you're good, just other than the pit. This is the tiered risers.
The tiered risers.
Yep.
Alright, so can I have a motion, please, for the tiered riser staging system purchase?
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the tiered riser's staging system purchase as presented.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grisimskowski.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman, for support. Questions from the board? Alright, let's take a vote, please.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we can vote on elementary music equipment purchase, Exhibit G.
Yes, and again, this is not the pit either.
Not the pit.
These are, these are actual elementary instruments.
Looking forward to the pit.
And the pit, you're actually going to get a presentation on this evening.
Oh, boy.
No additional questions on the elementary music equipment purchase.
Alright, great. So these are the instruments that go into the elementary. There was a great presentation about where they're going. Can I please have a motion?
Sure. I move the Board of Education approve elementary music equipment purchase as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Mrs. Grisimskowski. Any other comments? Yes, sir? Mr. Wiseman, then?
Yes, a couple, a couple things. As it related, both the tier risers and the elementary music equipment, and down the road, when we talk about the pit. These are all made possible because of the bond issue. I think it's very important for people to recognize that these are things that need to be done to provide opportunities and safety for our kids, but would be taken out of the general fund, which would have a direct impact on instruction. 85% of our general fund is paid for on people. And because of the bond issue, we're able to purchase these equipments without having any impact. So I think it's important to note that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wiseman. Ms. Cotter.
Yes, I just wanted to say that during the presentation, I had asked the question regarding the purchase of our elementary instruments, that they did a thorough inventory of each and every elementary school and decided who needed what, and they would purchase those items. Therefore, all of our elementaries are going to be very equitable in their music department. And I appreciated that. They're not overspending, they're just making things kinda even out. So they, they did a wonderful inventory, and I thank the team for that.
We have a good team. Alright, without other questions, let's do a vote.
Ms. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Mr. Dimick.
Yes.
And Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Alright, that concludes, I believe, unfinished business. No, now we go into new business, yes? New business, yes. And we do have one item we will be voting on during new business because I don't think people can wait one more minute for the calendar. I know there's a lot of travel agents waiting for those calls that are about ready to come. So, so the next item is school calendar, 25-26 school calendar. Can I have a motion, please? Do we do a presentation first? Do we need to do a presentation first?
Yeah, we typically would do a brief presentation.
Let's do a presentation first.
We would ask Mr. Diverner to do that.
I can do that, and I'll be brief.
Thank you.
So the HVEA and Administration has come to, as you heard earlier in the committee reports, a tentative agreement on the 25-26 school calendar. It is similar to prior school years, continues with the amount of professional learning, time for teachers, and meets the required 180 days and 1,098 hours of instruction. The parties further agreed that, following board approval, that there would be a district-wide communication to the community and to school staff members. So we are asking this evening, as you mentioned, for the board to approve the 25-26 calendar and communication plan as presented.
Thank you very much. I imagine that email is on cue, right? Ready to go? Tomorrow morning, so, tomorrow morning and afternoon. Alright, thank you very much for that, we appreciate it. Do we have comments from the board? Oh, no, let's do a motion, sorry. I'm gonna get used to this eventually. May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six school calendar.
Thank you very much, Mr. Demick. Do we have support?
I'm going to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Cotter. All right, now, comments. Yes.
Uh, is it possible for us just to tell everybody when spring break is right now?
No. Sorry. There's, there is something, in terms of the way that the tentative agreement was written, we were very specific in terms of when we would release the document. So we want to honor the negotiation process and, and don't want to, uh, you know, go back on that.
Until tomorrow, then.
Yes, less than twenty-four hours. Sorry.
But the calendar, when it's released, will spell out when those dates are, when the early releases, when the full day PL day.
The calendar is similar format to what we have released in years past. But will be available for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, and it'll be done in multi-colors so that people pick that up.
Very similar format.
Similar format.
Yeah, okay.
All right, other questions? It was a good question, Ms. Grisimskowski. I don't blame you.
I know a lot of people.
I know. Twenty-four. We got it. We can do it.
They'll know tomorrow.
All right, so with no additional questions, again, typically with this sort of thing, we have a first reading, we let it sit for a couple of weeks until our next meeting, and then we vote, but we know that this is timely and needs to get out there. So we're changing our regular procedures tonight to be able to get this calendar out tomorrow. Uh, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Demick?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Dodd?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda in new business is Bid PAC fifteen, Huron Valley Schools Administration Building Relocation Exhibit I. Don't know if my glasses on, yes.
Yes, thank you, and I would ask Mr. Van Goghtham to speak to this item.
Thank you, Dr. Sala. So as a result of the planning, not only for the two thousand nineteen, but two thousand twenty-four bond, uh, one of the projects that was discussed and identified was the administration building, and as a result of, uh, the district strategic plan two-point O, uh, the district made a determination that now is a good time to relocate that building to Milford High School, which, uh, currently has some space available for the administration building. Uh, so through Clark Construction, we received bids on June second, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, bidder response was good. Uh, we have attached a letter as a result of the bid summary from Clark Construction, uh, which identifies all the contractors, uh, and the bids and their amounts. Uh, a post-bid interview was held with all of the apparent low bidders to confirm their understanding of the work and the implementation schedule. Again, you'll see a, uh, recommendation letter which has seventeen bidders and their dollar amounts. A total including contingency and general conditions is six-point-two-seven-eight-four-one-seven million dollars, uh, and that will be actually, uh, as a part of the, the Capital Projects Fund. Uh, we are not asking for approval this evening. Uh, we will be doing so at the July second board meeting.
Oh, thank you very much. May I please have a motion?
No.
Nope, I'm not getting a motion, we're just talking about it. Does anybody have questions? Tom?
Yes, uh, we'll follow the process, and we'll have an opportunity to look this over, the details that you've provided to us. I know that, uh, we had quite a discussion at Finance and Operations regarding this. A couple of things I think it's important to note, and you mentioned it, that this was all part of the, the strategic plan two-point O, because really what it does is reduces the footprint within our district. There's space available over at Milford High School, thus the move of the administration building over to Milford High School, which then reduces a variety of costs that we're incurring right now. So those are general fund savings, and this is being made possible through another fund, which is the bond issue that has no effect upon the general fund, other than the fact that we're going to realize some significant savings because of that move ultimately. Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, you are correct, Mr. Wiseman.
And the other thing is, uh, I think hats off as it relates to the estimators. Um, this came in about nine percent less than what we had originally anticipated, but I think it's important to note that when you look at that bottom figure, and, and we have this information in front of us, the three largest items almost, uh, I would say about two-point, two-point-two, two-point-two million dollars of that is around plumbing, heating and cooling, electrical, and site work. Okay? Those are, especially in the area of plumbing and HVAC and electrical, those are improvements that we're making on an existing building, and that if, and, and some of that would be done during the course of, uh, uh, improvements at Milford High School anyhow. So it would, it, these are things that are being done because of that move, but would be done ultimately if that space wasn't available for the administration building. But because we're doing these things in the administration building now, we're able to get those things accomplished.
Yeah, we will occupy about twenty thousand square feet of Milford High School, um, away from the, the overall population so that the community has a, a separate entrance. Um, and you're absolutely correct. Many of these topics, uh, or these categories, rather, would, would be a necessity, whether we, whether we, uh, you know, revamped the classroom spaces or we moved the administrative offices there, so.
And because we're moving there, we're moving there because there's space available.
That's, that's correct.
Because right now, we have, we have Milford High School pretty much.
Milford High School.
We're at Lakeland shares with our International Academy.
Yeah, for those who, for those who are familiar with our strategic plan process, so we, Milford High School is about four hundred thousand square feet, and, you know, and its, and its height had over two thousand students attending. Next year, we project enrollment to be around eleven, eleven-hundred-and-fifty. Um, so we need to occupy the spaces, and we need to do that in a, in a responsible, fiscally responsible way. Hence the rationale for taking the administration building offline, uh, to create a space that is conducive for our community to come in, to fill out paperwork, to register their children, to participate in meetings, uh, to engage in professional learning. And the current administration building, if you've ever seen it, you, you'll know that the building is, is in dire straits. Um, we, we have not invested in administration spaces, we've invested in our schools, which is how it should be, but it's to the point where the portables that we've attached to the main administration building are, are, they're just not, um, they don't have, yes, they're falling apart. We don't, they don't have much life left in them. I think we've passed, uh, you know, the extent of their.
They're on life support.
They are. So this allows us to, uh, utilize, uh, district real estate, uh, and execute the, the strategic plan, especially strategic plan goal two-point, especially strategic plan goal two, which deals with resources and infrastructure. Um, it was very deliberate, um, and, uh, we are moving forward with that plan.
So what's going to happen to the existing administration?
We expect the existing administration building will be raised.
Okay, and with this move from the present administration building over to Milford, is that going to interfere at all with the instruction, uh, the opportunities for our students at Milford High School?
No, zero impact.
Zero impact, because it's space available?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. And this will be presented to us on July second?
July second, yes.
And the reason why we're moving ahead so quickly, or maybe not quickly, but?
At our last board meeting, the board approved the asbestos removal, so we'll start the asbestos removal in that space. Asbestos removal for any construction, especially prior to nineteen ninety, is very common. So those who hear asbestos, don't panic, it's totally normal. Um, so we are, the board approved the asbestos removal. As soon as that's done, we want them to begin this work in the summer. That's why we're asking for approval so quickly.
So when do you see ultimately us closing down the existing administration building and be, at least beginning the process of moving the administrative function over to Milford High School?
Uh, Jeffrey, what do we anticipate? Next spring break for that?
Yeah, so I would think, I would think we would be slowly moving over in groups, you know, department-specific, uh, Mr. Wiseman, around spring break, which we'll all know tomorrow. And so, so the goal is that we will, we will be doing that, like, with, with essentially around spring break time, and, and I, I could see that taking place over several, uh, weeks, if not, you know, months till we can get everything over there. Uh, we would, the goal would be to have, uh, the building completely offline by the end of the upcoming fiscal year, which is June thirtieth to twenty-sixth.
Because obviously, the urgency as it relates to bringing, getting that offline is for us to begin recognizing some general fund savings.
Correct. I think it's also important to note with, with this, that we, we took a look at what, what it would cost to build a new building, and we were very sensitive to that, knowing that that would cost substantially more than, you know, moving into a, a space. So I appreciate the board as well as the community knowing that, you know, this was not something that was taken lightly. It was definitely not one of the first projects we had in mind. We know the deterioration of the building, uh, we see it every day as we work there, but, you know, the intent was to do this as cost-efficient and practical as possible, and I think moving into an existing structure definitely accomplishes that goal in lieu of raising the old building and building us a brand-new one. We're, we're trying to take over existing real estate and really just turn it into office space, if you will.
And ultimately, it reduces our footprint.
Correct.
You know, reducing footprint reduces cost.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
All right, other comments or questions about Bid PAC fifteen? All right, so we have an opportunity to review the materials presented, ask any questions that we have before we reconvene at our next meeting on July second. Uh, our final item under new business is the much-anticipated orchestra pit filler, exhibit J.
I'm really excited about this one. Mr. Van Goghtham, I'll kick this to you.
Yes, I'm, I'm honored to be speaking about the orchestra pit filler system this evening as a highlight to the new business for the remainder of our school year. So, uh, I had the opportunity to work with, uh, Ms. Weeks, Megan Weeks, who was our finance coordinator for the district. Uh, one of the things on our original bond program list from the two thousand nineteen, uh, bond program was, uh, this orchestra pit filler. And so we've spent the better part of, uh, six to nine months really looking at pit fillers and all the different varieties that you can use with respect to pit fillers, and so, uh, I never knew I would be such an expert in pit filling, but now apparently I am. So, uh, before you this evening is the recommendation from not only our finance department, but, uh, supported in TLT as well as, uh, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting, uh, which is, uh, the pit filler that's brought to us by Stage Right. Uh, they were the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Uh, we're looking at a total of a hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents in total, which includes the twelve percent contingency. Uh, I do want to say hats off to Ms. Weeks, she spent a lot of time looking at these. She actually, the, the one that you're going to see in our example, she went out and saw a similar system, and, you know, is, is pretty excited about this, and really, it comes back to the benefit of our students and our performing arts program. Uh, they, this will be, you know, a, a very different look for us as we, you know, have these performances that we do at our, um, CPA at the Milford High School campus. So what you can see here is, is our current system, uh, which is basically, you know, we made a, we have like a makeshift, uh, sit-up system here that requires, uh, expertise really in trying to set it up and down, and really, uh, not conducive for our maintenance and operations department nor our performing arts program. So if you can skip to the next slide for us, uh, this is where the students are at by our, our current, and the, you know, it's really, the students have done a good job managing on a, really an outdated system, and so that the next slide for us here will show, uh, that the newest system will be able to have, uh, partial or full removal, uh, no cranes necessary, which is great, and it'll also encompass a pit safety net, uh, which, you know, as our students are performing is, is almost essential. Uh, one of the things that Ms. Weeks wanted me to point out is that, you know, you can remove sections of this, so she could actually see, uh, the conductor of the music group doing their performance, the rest of the, the, um, music ensemble would be under this cover, uh, and so you'll be able to, she'll be able to take direction and, and give direction a little bit easier. I can, I know from my several conversations with, uh, Ms. Weeks that this group is, you know, really excited about this, and I'm, I'm happy that we're able to support them as we're moving through some of the purchases with respect to the performing arts group. So, uh, that's, that's the presentation in a nutshell. Uh, we did bring it to a couple committees. Uh, we are asking that the board consider this, and again, we will probably, we will bring this to the July second, uh, board meeting for approval so that we can get this on order, uh, and hopefully have it ready as soon as possible for our students in the, in the finance department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Goghtham. Um, may I have a, no, we're not motioning, we're just talking about it. Anybody have questions? Yes, Amy?
We had a really great discussion in finance and operations, and I just want to say I really appreciate, uh, Ms. Weeks' presentation and her, um, all of our rapid-fire questions, like how many kids could fall on the net without the net breaking?
Oh, yeah.
She said, I think there's like three or four. So, I mean, in my head, I'm envisioning It's a Wonderful Life and that dance scene where, whatever. But, um, you know, that was, you know, those are the questions that we asked, you know, about the materials. As you could see in the first couple pictures, there was this makeshift winch. The, this is just, um, you know, there are two gentlemen putting these, these panels in the floor, because over twenty years, materials have changed. Fortunately, they're lighter, they're just as strong. Um, and so tip, for us to be able to move in that direction and for, not only, um, for finance and operation, our, our M and O, not to have backbreaking work, but then to have our kids to be part of stage setup, that's a really important aspect of, uh, theater. So I just really appreciate, uh, Ms. Weeks' presentation and the work that she's done on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wiseman.
Why aren't we doing this at Lakeland?
There isn't a pit.
Yeah, there is no pit similar to the one at Milford, Mr. Wiseman.
Okay.
Questions to the left. The right's been asking a lot of questions, the left not so much. I should stage-left you, though. That's really the way it is, yeah.
I'd be on the wrong side.
So I would, I was the only member who did not receive the presentation at a meeting, uh, but I did ask Ms. Weeks, because, um, I have been there during the removal of the pit cover and just the real, I mean, honestly, it's terrifying. Um, I did ask, what about an automatic system? This is a manual system, and, um, and I, I was impressed with my, with the response that I received, which was, it's not, it's, it's not, it's. So they do have systems that are a lot more automatic, um, but they just are, they're out of our league. So I think as it relates to, um, to this type of system and the students being able to participate, I think that's, uh, wonderful. And the addition of a gnat is a, I'm grateful for that addition, so, um, so thank you. Other questions? I'm looking one more time. No, we have, oh, Mr. Demick.
It's a great stage. I mean, I'm really, I'm just trying to drag it out, because we really, this has been a really exciting conversation about this pit, and I'm thrilled about it myself.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Demick.
Anything else about the pit?
Can we just keep talking about this over and over?
So, we have two weeks to keep talking about it amongst ourselves, uh, as we wish, to ask questions, to get any clarifications, any of the things we need in order to vote on it at our June second meeting. Uh, but with that, we are finished with new business. Uh, I do not have, have additional public comment forms, looking to the audience. No additional public comments. Uh, moving on to good and welfare, Mr. Demick?
So, I was actually at a performance over the weekend at Milford High School. My niece is in the, uh, she's a dancer, and so is my sister-in-law. And Ms. Weeks, I happened to look back, was working in, in the booth as well, and I got to observe the stage up front, so I just wanted to plug that, that stage again.
Other good and welfare? I'm gonna give just two quick good and welfares. Number one, 'cause I always have to tell you, every time there's going to be a performance, the community group, um, Rising Stars in Milford will be presenting Matilda Junior this weekend at the Little Theater at Milford High School. Uh, performances on Friday night and Saturday night at seven PM, and on Sunday afternoon at two. It is very family-friendly and relatively short for a stage show, so, uh, definitely appropriate for your littlest theater-goers, uh, to participate. That's number one. Number two, for those of you looking for summer activities, we're only a few days in, but we know that there's a lot of kids looking at us trying to find something to do. Please remember our Community Rec and Ed group. They have all sorts of outstanding activities, from, from sports to arts, to traditional summer camp, all sorts of great stuff out there, very reasonable prices. So, please remember to check out the Community Rec and Ed group if you are looking for activities for yourself or your youngsters this summer. Any other good and welfare? No. Uh, finally, I'm gonna give the last comment to Dr. Solak.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple, uh, quick final thoughts in response to our public comment. First of all, I just wanna thank all of you who spoke today. Uh, it, it's always helpful to hear from staff and parents, and, uh, of course, you know, class size is an important topic for all of us. And I, I want you to know that it's not falling on deaf ears. This is a complicated process that we have to follow when we're trying to build our budget and do staffing. Um, I, so I just wanna share a couple of thoughts with you. Title, type, OXPO was mentioned as a title once, well, that is a hundred percent accurate. Uh, OXPO also receives an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to help support some of the high needs of our, of our children in that building. I think that that is an important point to make, because when we staff, the, the federal government requires us to, uh, to look at the base-level staffing for the entire district and staff consistently across the board at all eight elementaries. And then, we are to add in on top of that resources to support children that have needs. So, that's where that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, comes into play, that, that OXPO gets. There are a couple of our buildings that receive those additional funds. That could be used to, to pay for things like additional parent support and high-needs, uh, classrooms, additional social work support, PBIS support. Many, you guys are familiar with, with some of these topics. The other thing that was mentioned was the State Board of Education resolution. That's worth watching for our board members. If you have not had a, a chance to read that resolution or to watch that conversation, I actually had an opportunity to watch that conversation. I agree with, and I think probably everybody up here agrees with what was shared. And that resolution was a call to the legislature to provide categorical funding so that we have the resources to, across the board, reduce class sizes in K through three specifically. So, if you recall, when, when we had our own discussion amongst and between the board, we talked about K through three being the focus. And that's why contractually, you'll notice the class size is the max, is a little smaller in grades K through three. If we could get down to those numbers that the State Board discussed, that would be fantastic. So, I wanna encourage anyone out there that has a vested interest in public education. Matt Maddock is our local representative, reach out to him. Jim Runstead is our senator, reach out to him. Tell them you support the State Board of Education resolution. Governor Whitmer is our governor, tell her you support the State Board of Education resolution. Unfortunately, the State Board of Education has zero power or authority. They can pass resolutions and encourage the, the legislature to take action, but the legislature is not compelled to take action on anything. So, they need to hear from community members. They hear from me, yeah, we need to reduce class sizes, give us, uh, you know, categorical. They expect me to say those things. They need to hear it from our parents and our community. And then, uh, finally, OXPO, I did get a chance to look at first grade, so it looks like first grade currents twenty-seven, twenty-seven. So, we are, the, the contractual class size is twenty-nine. So, OXPO, that specific grade is on my radar, we are watching it. There are a couple of others. I included all of those in board notes, uh, for the board to, to look at last week. So, just full transparency, uh, around, uh, those public comments and, and some additional concluding remarks. Thank you again.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for your patience this evening as we're learning our new roles. And with that, we are adjourned.